Alrighty, I call the board supervisor meeting to order. And as we begin, we're going to start with the pledge of allegiance and invocation. The pledge of allegiance is going to be led by Paula Harvey and Pastor Justin Hall will be the invocation. Please stand, everybody.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Dear Lord, I do want to thank you for the gift of government. And I thank you for those men and women who are willing to serve on this board and to serve in this capacity. I pray, Lord, that you would give them your wisdom and your discernment, that they would make the decisions that are not just popular with the citizenship, but those that align with your divine law. Father, I pray and ask that you would bless each of their families, especially this Christmas season, as oftentimes this position comes with criticism. And Father, I pray most of all that each of them would know Jesus Christ as their only Lord and Savior, so that when they stand before you, the Law-Giver and the sovereign judge, that they would not be ashamed, but that they would stand in the confidence and grace of Jesus Christ. I pray it in his name. Amen.
Do we have any amendments to the agenda? If not, we'll assume that they were as presented. So our big item on the agenda is a special recognition by the Health and Smith County Community Hospital Foundation.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm Dale Clark. I'm the CEO for Smith County Community Hospital. And given our announcement a couple of weeks ago of the change in relationship between the hospital and the foundation and Valid, we thought best to come back to you to see if there were any questions, any other information we could provide. And I guess for my part, given the questions I've heard over the couple of weeks or so, just to reassure you that the hospital is still there and still will be there, operating and taking care of patients. And we are working very hard to keep more patients locally so that we can take care of people close to home. Our census is higher than it has been. In some ways, that's unfortunate, but it is better that we're able to care for folks there and that we do continue to look for ways to care for people here and provide the care that's needed. And with other work across Valid to improve the health, the underlying health of our communities, to do things that change that as well, so that they don't have to come to see us. So just to see if you have any questions and others with the foundation are here as well.
Any questions?
Mr. Clark, is there any plans in the near future to have available an acute care? I don't want to say urgent care because that implies an emergency, but an acute care for patients that don't seem to have a primary care provider? Because I work in healthcare, there's a lot of patients that I have are struggling with a primary care provider. So they wind up having to go to Abingdon or Bristol or to, you know, further north to try to get care when they need it.
Yes.
So kind of if you could elaborate on maybe the plans moving forward for that to try to bridge that gap.
Both. And I don't know if you're generally talking about urgent care or the facility, a facility where someone without a primary care relationship could come in, or expanding primary care as well. And we recognize both needs, so working on both.
Yeah, actually, a situation that doesn't necessarily risk life or limb per se, that warrants an emergency room visit because that is astronomical in cost, just to treat an ear infection or
A toothache.
General temperature, yeah.
Or needing a suture or two, yes.
It needs to be looked at quickly, but it's not super life-threatening at the moment.
Correct, yes. So it is something we are working on and it's something we've had in the past in looking at how best to do that to fit with the need for folks who also don't have a primary care relationship, so that we could perhaps meet both needs. Realizing that much of the population, especially if you tend to be younger and more healthy, unlike myself, you may not have a primary care person, primary care physician, just because you don't feel that you need it yet. We in healthcare also understand that it would be better if you do have that because we can help you avoid many things that come with age. So yes, it is something we're working on.
Thank you, sir.
I'm just asking you this question so we can put a rumor to rest.
Good.
I've had several people in the community ask, they said, what? They said, are the plans to close Smith County Community Hospital? I said, absolutely not. Am I correct in saying?
You are correct. There are no plans.
I just wanted to fix it, get that on record so that people would not, you know, that they would understand. Because I don't know if you all have gotten that question, but I've probably gotten it four or five times in the last week. And I think people, when they see the, you know, what was transpired with the sale there, I think that just starts things like that. So I'm just putting that to bed for it. So, thank you.
Good. It certainly, I think for many, many reasons, and I think Mr. Deaton and Mr. Icorn addressed when we talked with a group of folks, a group of leaders around the county. Strategically, it makes sense from the needs of the region and the community that we need to be here. And I certainly don't think that I came here with the idea that we would shrink. I believe we will grow. So yes, sort of the short one line is no, we are not closing, we are not going away.
Thank you. That's what we all wanted to hear.
Good.
Any other questions? John, any of y'all want to make a comment?
Well, just for the record, even if there aren't any other questions, I'd like to at least introduce the folks who are here so that there's a record that we want to be available and want to be responsive to the community and address issues that come up and put to rest some of those concerns. Mike Robinson, Dr. Michael Robinson was a former school board superintendent. He's the new chairperson of the Smith County Community Foundation. And Dr. David Kaiser is an eye physician and is on the foundation board. And the three of us were a part of an eight-person team that did the negotiations for that. And we also have Stacy Ely here, who's also from Valid as a spokesperson, as a representative.
I'd just like to say thank you to the foundation. You all have done a lot of great things in our community. So I appreciate what you all have done.
I appreciate you making yourselves available here tonight just to answer the questions. I mean, you could have dodged it and just kept going on, but thank you for coming out and answering some questions. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Success with what goes forward.
Thank you.
Alright, Mrs. Emily Weiers, our presentation of the June 21st audit report.
Good evening. Thank you all for having me here. My name is Emily Weiers. I'm the partner in charge on your engagement. I think most of you all have had the pleasure or perhaps the pain of sitting through one of these presentations before. I'm a creature of habit, so we're going to do basically what we did last year. We're going to walk through, hopefully you've got the audit report in front of you. It's the big file. It's about 150, 50 some odd pages long. We'll walk through this first and then we'll go over the smaller file that I handed out. I'll try to go over the statements briefly, aside from the numbers and the information changing for what happened during the year. The report itself didn't change a whole lot, so we won't spend too much time on it. We'll hit the highlights. The first thing to mention is on page two of the report is the independent auditor's report. This is where we state whether we think your financial statements are materially correct in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. So you guys have a clean, unmodified opinion there. And we're in the big file still, the one, the larger report. The next section of the report starts on page five. That's the basic financial statements. We've got entity-wide financial statements, which are full accrual. That includes fixed assets and long-term debt. Followed by that, you've got exhibits three and five that are modified basis, which go out about 60 days from year end. So they're much more near-term in focus so that you can see from an economical standpoint what resources you have available and what liabilities you have coming up that will need to be paid in the near future. Exhibit seven, eight, and nine are your proprietary funds. You have a balance sheet and income statement and a statement of cash flows. Behind that are the fiduciary funds. Those do look a little bit different this year. You've got a balance sheet and an income statement this year. You did implement GASB statement number 84 during the year, which implemented, which changed the reporting for custodial funds. Not a whole lot really changed there, but there is a new statement that shows up in your basic financial statements. The notes to financial statements follow that. And then I'm actually going to jump all the way to the very back of the report. On page 143 is what I usually refer to as your yellow book opinion. This is where we take a look at your internal controls, as well as some compliance-related requirements that the APA tells us we need to look at because you're a governmental entity. We did have one item noted that's the same as last year. We had proposed material audit adjustments as part of our procedures that we performed. But otherwise, we did not have any non-compliance noted or any internal control-related matters that really relate to the day-to-day operations of the locality. That's more getting information ready for the financial statements and not so much just the ongoing activity throughout the year. On page 145 is our report in accordance with Uniform Guidance. Because you guys receive over $750,000 in federal funds each year, you're required to undergo a single audit. You guys have a clean, unmodified opinion. So that means that as part of our procedures, we didn't have any issues noted with internal controls or compliance-related matters related to the overriding Uniform Guidance requirements or the specific programs that were tested during the year. So you have three different audit opinions, two of which are unmodified, one which has a note about material audit adjustments. If there's any questions about the report itself, I'd be happy to try to answer those. Otherwise, I thought we'd go on to the smaller presentation file. You should have that in front of you too. It's a much smaller file. My contact information is on the front of that. So you are welcome to reach out at any point if you've got questions, if you're reviewing things and you'd like to have some more information. You're welcome to reach out and let me know. On page two is a general fund summary. This is essentially the income statement on the modified basis of accounting. So this is exhibit five, rekeyed into a schedule just so that you can kind of see the last five years of revenues and expenditures and how those have either grown or declined over the years. The amounts off to the right that are highlighted green are compounded annual growth rates, just to kind of, you know, remove the effects of any outlined transactions that might happen throughout the year to show you over the five years how the revenues have grown overall or the expenditures have grown or declined overall. Just a couple of things to point out. You can see that property taxes increased pretty significantly. That relates predominantly to the reassessment that occurred during the year. Other local taxes went up. They've gone up at a pretty good amount over the last five years, but they grew 200,000 from last year. That's mostly sales tax. And I imagine related to a decline in 2020 because of the pandemic in 2021, hopefully things started opening back up a little bit more. Intergovernmental revenues are up pretty significantly. That's the cares money that you all received at the end of 2020, but you spent during 2021. So that's the revenue that's being recognized to match with those expenditures. I imagine that that number will continue to either maintain or grow over the next few years as you utilize the ARPA money that you received at the end of 2021. Down towards the bottom of the page where there's the yellow highlighted and blue, it's in two sections, so I'm on the top, yellow, highlight in blue. We've got ending unassigned fund balance and ending cash and investment balances. In the cash and investment balances, I removed the effects of the unearned revenue, which is the cares or CRF funds and the ARPA funds that you received at the end of June each year that you still had on hand, that you had yet to expend. So if you're trying to tie this out to the financial statements, it won't tie exactly because I wanted to take out that cash that's not really available for whatever you'd like to use it for. And then unassigned fund balance should tie directly to the report. And then down at the very bottom, you can see that we've taken those balances as a percentage of expenditures for the year. And when we look at expenditures, again, we look at the county plus the school board minus the transfer in between. And then we compare your unassigned cash and your unassigned fund balance as a percentage of expenditures. So you can see that you have 16% in unassigned fund balance in reserves and 17% in ending cash balances in reserves. So that balance, particularly the ending fund balance, has grown from 8% in 2017 up to 16% in 2021. So I think that's great. Whatever you guys and management are doing, I think you're doing a good job. So keep that up. GFOA recommends two months in reserves, which works out to about 16, 17%. So you're right at GFOA's recommended reserve balance. I tend to be a risk averse person, so I like to have a little bit more in reserves than GFOA recommends. So just keep working to maintain those reserve balances, maybe grow them just a little bit. But I think, I think that's a great increase from 8% to 16%, from 17 to 2021. The next couple of pages, pages three and four, are just a couple of pie charts to show where you generate the amounts of revenues and where you expend revenues. You can see on page three that the green piece of the pie grew pretty significantly. Again, that's CRF money. But if you're looking to grow revenues, you want to focus on, you kind of want to exclude the intergovernmental. You don't really have much control over that. So you want to focus on the other pieces of the pie. And then page four kind of tells you where you've expended your money. It's a little bit different this year, but for the most part, locality seem to be pretty consistent in how they expend money. I think this year is a little bit different because the way that the cares funds were expended kind of changed where that went or how the pieces of the pie kind of fit together. On page five is a summary of long-term obligations. This includes the governmental activities, so the general fund of the county, the school board, and the water and sewer funds. It also includes actual bond issuances as well as things that are more estimates, like pension and OPEB and compensated absences. And then down at the bottom, there's a debt per capita figure. I don't include the state averages and things like that. I know that people sometimes like to see that, but I try not to compare too much between one locality to the next. You never really know what kind of reserves people have in place, what the issuances are for. So without a little bit more detail, I think it's not as useful necessarily to have that comparison there. But you can see what your debt per capita calculates out, including all of the long-term obligations. On page six is a required communication with governance letter. You guys have a pretty standard boilerplate letter. There's really nothing exciting, which is what you want in your governancer. It does disclose that you implemented GASB 84 that we discussed. It goes over your significant estimates, which are the same as last year, your pension and OPEB, depreciable lives of fixed assets, the allowance for doubtful accounts. If we had any difficulties in dealing with management, that would be disclosed here. But I think we've got a great group of people and they do seem to, you know, while we're on site, we try to be as efficient as possible. We know that they have day-to-day jobs that they need to do and they do a really good job of working with us to get us the information so that we can do what we need to do and then let them get back to their normal jobs. So we certainly appreciate that. The next few pages of the report, starting on page nine, are the proposed audit adjustments as part of our procedures. I wasn't going to go into much detail, but we are supposed to provide those to you. On page 14 are the audit recommendations as part of the procedures that we performed. These are just things that we thought would help make things more efficient or maybe a little bit better as far as processes. Nothing significant enough to be included in the report itself. Generally, I don't go into too much detail with these. Hopefully, they're fairly straightforward. These have been provided to management. So if you review them as you have time and have questions, I'd be happy to go over them. But I wasn't going to go into much detail.
Just in looking at this, 14 out of 40 disbursements didn't have signs and purchase orders?
So they do have, it is a large percentage, but they do have manual checks of someone when they sign the check manually. They're looking at the documentation. But they didn't have the purchase order in place. They just weren't consistently using a purchase order for all the purchases. So we'd really prefer to see that the purchase order be used consistently for all purchases.
J D I is on that today, because I read that also. Of course, we have a new person that's doing our cafeteria books who just started last year. And so I think that's where the majority of that came, was this is a person who changed jobs. So I think it, but I think that has been fixed.
Okay.
Because I questioned that some when I checked.
I mean, that's an indicator of internal control.
Yes, if there were not manual check signers there, that would have been very significant. But the fact that they're manually signing the checks, it makes us feel more comfortable that they're actually looking at those things and signing the checks physically. The last thing that's included in the presentation file starts on page 17. The GASB board has been very busy with new standards for us to implement over the next few years. The LEAST standard, which is on page 17, is implemented for FY '22, so that'll be effective for next year. The other standards are over the next several years, so that's just informational. If you all would like to read into those more later at your leisure, you are welcome to. Perhaps if you have trouble sleeping tonight, those might be helpful. But overall, I think that the audit process itself went well. Like I said, we had three opinions, two unmodified, one with one note mentioned. Your fund balances look great. So if we can, if we can be of any help, if we can help answer any questions, I'm here tonight to try to do that. I know you guys have a lot on your plates. You've got a lot in the next year with all the ARPA money coming up to be spent. So if there are questions that you come across along the way, we're happy to try to help as we can.
Emily, I have one more.
Just me.
When you gave the per capita debt ratio, that actually went up.
It did. I think that's driven mostly by your pension balances. Your pension balances went up because you guys didn't have any new debt issuances during the year. You really just paid off debt in accordance with your amortization schedules.
Because I was wondering what caused that.
Yeah, that's pension. Pension for most localities this year went up. I'm hoping that 2021, because it's valued a year behind, so that's based on 2020 totals. I'm hoping that 2021, the market did a little bit better and so your liability will go down.
We always pay just the minimum that the state VRS requires on that. Do you have any localities that are actually paying a little more? Is any reason we should consider that?
No, not really. I think everybody that I have, that I work with, and I think in our office, I can't swear to what the other teams do. But everybody that I have just pays the percentage that VRS tells them because that percentage is intended over time to make sure that you're covering your liability. And where you see the large fluctuations in the pension liability that shows up is because the market does better or worse than they've anticipated and so it changes your percentage. But I don't think that there's really any significant reason to input more. The reason that you might do it would be if you had excess funds available and if the market were down at the time, you might invest a little bit more into pension because they're able to invest in things that you as a government are not able to invest in. And so you may be able to put in your funds and they might be able to generate higher earnings to offset your liability. But you would want to time that when the market is low and you just had some extra funds available for it.
Go ahead, Chris.
Forgive my ignorance here, but when you say unmodified opinion, can you elaborate on what you're really saying there?
That just means that you have a clean audit report, basically. That's what you want.
Okay, that's what I was thinking, but just want to make sure.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions?
Any other questions?
Thank you all. I appreciate it. You guys have a good night.
Drive carefully getting home. Alrighty, in your pocket now is the minutes from the previous meeting. Hopefully everyone's had a chance, hopefully everyone's had a chance to look over those and read it. Do we have a motion to approve as presented? Have a motion to approve? Any second. Motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise?
Mr. Chairman, if you could record me as an abstain, I wasn't here, so I'd rather not vote on whether they're accurate or not.
Okay. We've got that then. Public hearing. Request for special exemption, exceptions, excuse me, request for a special exception for property located at 398 Sugar Street. Mr. Williams, you going to comment on that?
So last month, we received a special use permit application from Roger Blevins, who was interested in constructing an accessory building on a small tract of land on Sugar Street. We had a public hearing with the planning commission last month. No one spoke at that public hearing. And after that public hearing, the planning commission recommended to you all unanimously that his special use permit application be approved.
Mr. Chairman? I'd like to make a motion to reiterate the rules in the previous discussion for the property at 398 Sugar Street.
Yeah, I would suggest that we open the public hearing. If you want me to read the ad, I'd be happy to do that.
Yes.
And then I would close the public hearing and then take Lori's, yes. Before the Smith County Board of Supervisors, the Smith County Board of Supervisors will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, December 14th, 2021 at 5:00 PM or soon thereafter, as may be heard, in the Smith County Office Building, 121 Bagley Circle, Marion, Virginia, to consider the filing and application to the zoning ordinance to Smith County, Virginia. An application from Roger Blevins for a special use permit for an accessory building above 150 square feet in size without a main building. The property was addressed as 398 Sugar Street, Marion, Virginia, identified as tax map number 67-A-50J and zoned agricultural rural. At this public hearing, subject to the rules and procedure, the board supervisors of Smith County, Virginia, any person may appear and state his or her views thereon. Copies of the application, along with their maps and drawings, are on file at the office of the county administrator of Smith County. Copies are also maintained by the county's own administrator at the address given above and may be viewed during regular business hours, Monday through Friday. In compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act, persons requiring special assistance to attend and participate in this hearing should contact Clegg Williams, ADA Coordinator, at 276-706-8315 at least 48 hours prior to the hearing. By order of the board of supervisors, Sean Up, county administrator. And here's the sign-up sheet for tonight's hearing.
Alright, no one, I guess I'll entertain a motion to waive reading of the rules. Motion is second from everyone. All those in favor waiving the rules, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, now, no one has signed up to speak. Anyone present wishing to speak on this issue? Hearing none. I'm going to close the public hearing.
Now, Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to waive the rules and go ahead and approve the special exception for the property at 398 Sugar Street.
Have a motion is second. Any dispute or discussion? Alright, I guess first off, we got to vote to waive the rules. All those in favor waiving the rule, waiving our rules to vote tonight, say aye. Any opposed likewise? Okay, we waive the rules now. We vote on the
Sorry, I did it in one motion.
But we're going to do it in two.
Okay, two motions then, to approve the request.
Now, we're going to vote to approve the request, Mr. Blevins. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed likewise? I guess it passes.
Thank you. And then while I was out there, I grabbed the sign-up sheet for the next public hearing.
And now I'll open the public hearing on the redistricting ordinance, meaning Smith County Code. Page 68 in here. There's also on your desk probably a handout that corrects them, a word correction in that. Do we have any discussion on this? Anybody in the room wishing to speak on it? Basically, for you, if you're not informed, we did not change enough that we are able to keep our same Basically, for you, if you're not informed, we did not change enough that we are able to keep our same lines for each district as we've had in the past. We did not have to spend time figuring out which little nook and cranny was gonna change districts. So all the districts stay the same. That's the, that's the recommendation from the ordinance committee. Hearing none, comment, I'll close the public hearing on that. And I'd save a vote on that at our December thirtieth meeting. At least I'm thinking it's what we'll do.
We can unless you want to waive the rules tonight.
I make a motion to waive the rules and vote tonight.
Second. Did I have a second? Alright, any discussion? First off, we gonna waive, vote to waive the rules again. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed likewise? Okay, we waive the rules now, let's vote on the ordinance committee recommendation to leave it as it is with a few changes and a few words. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed likewise? Motion passes. Y'all making my job easy here, thank you. Minutes from the previous meeting. The public hearings will be down to... Financial report, Ms. Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I want to come up to the podium there so Sean can hear me. You should have your standard reports there at your dais. The first one we'll start with is the revenue summary. This is revenue collected through November thirty, twenty twenty-one. First page is Fund One, the next pages are the various funds. And if you go to the final page, the current amount collected from July one, twenty twenty-one, through November thirty, twenty twenty-one is thirteen million, six hundred and twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and seventy-six dollars and six cents, leaving a remaining balance to be collected per the budget of sixty million, eighty-one thousand, five hundred and four dollars and sixty-four cents. That's the revenue. If you go to the expenditure summary, the next report, again, this is from July until November thirtieth, it's broken down by fund. Final page has total for all funds. The current amount expended was nine million, eighty-nine thousand, three hundred and nineteen dollars and eighty-one cents. I'm sorry, I didn't go, the year-to-date amount collected was thirty-three million, seven hundred and fifty-two thousand, eight hundred and thirteen dollars and eighty cents. That's the year-to-date amount expended, with a remaining balance of sixty-six million, three hundred and seventy-three thousand, four hundred and nine dollars and twenty cents. And I did not do the year-to-date collected on revenue, so let me go back and touch on that. The year-to-date collected on the revenue side was forty million, forty-four thousand, seven hundred and eighteen dollars and thirty-six cents. So that's your revenue and expenditure report through November. Attached to that, you should have the county expenses and appropriation report from the Treasurers Office. The November ending balance was fourteen million, five hundred and sixty-two thousand, six hundred and forty-two dollars and twenty-two cents. That was the bank ending balances on November thirty. On the next page is the uncollected water and sewer and uncollected county taxes. For the water and sewer department, the balances of November twenty twenty-one was a negative two million, six hundred and seventy-nine thousand, one hundred and fifty-four dollars and forty-six cents. Uncollected county taxes from two thousand and one to twenty twenty was three million, one hundred and ninety-five thousand, three hundred and one dollars and eighty-six cents. And then the uncollected county taxes for November alone, I'm sorry, for year twenty twenty-one through November, is ten million, two hundred and twenty-five thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars and four cents. And then finally, you have your Treasurers Accountability Report for November.
You didn't happen to, you didn't happen to talk to the Treasurers Office to see how our collections were through the first few days of November, of December, did you?
I did not. I know they're still working on that. Let's see, they don't have that on here either.
Because we had, we had a weekend fall there.
Right.
That really distorts those figures right, right there.
I did not, but I can get that information.
We'll have it next month when we meet.
Okay, alright.
Any other questions for Lisa?
Mr. Chairman, I have a quick question. Just on an annual basis, what is our anticipated tax, tax revenue for the year? It's probably in here and I just can't see it.
Your anticipated tax revenue?
For twenty twenty-one.
It should be on your, on the Treasurers Accountability, I believe.
If you look at the first page of your revenue, you'd have it there also.
On your budget side. Yes, top line, Fund One. General real property taxes.
Oh, okay, very good.
See that?
Yes, I did.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome.
We had our accounts payable listing in, in your packet for November enclosed for your review and consideration. I guess we need to put our stamp of approval on that by voting it's okay to pay them. So any discussion about, anybody see anything in particular of the payables? If not, I'll entertain a motion to pay them.
Move to approval.
Have a motion in the second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed likewise? Alrighty. Citizens' time.
We don't have anyone signed up.
All forward. Name and address for the perpetrator, please.
Okay, Charles Wassum, I live in Wassona, Marion, Virginia. And Wassums have been in Smith County since seventeen ninety-two, so we must like it. Thank you for your job. April the nineteenth, seventeen seventy-five, Levi Preston was one of the people who fought the British at Lexington and Concord. As you might recall, the British were going to Lexington and Concord to the, get the gunpowder guns, and the American War for Independence began. Many, many years later, when he was ninety-one years old, he was asked, why did you fight the British? And he said, we had always governed ourselves, and we always meant to. The British didn't think we should. So some years later, as that generation got together for the Constitutional Convention, it started off with we the people, not the president, the king, the Supreme Court, not anybody. We the people told them what to do, and they were to protect their rights. This is a little booklet that was printed by the Commission on the Bicentennial of the Constitution some years ago, back nineteen eighty-seven, nineteen eighty-eight, along in there. Warren Burg was chairman of the Commission. But in it, Alexander Hamilton said, "The sacred rights of mankind are not to be rummaged for among old parchments. They are written by the hand of divinity itself and can never be erased or obscured by mortal power." So what I think he's saying there is the rights of mankind are God-given, they're not given by government. They're not given by the Constitution of Virginia or the U.S. Constitution. They are coming from God. Appreciate y'all serving for the past year, and, uh, thank you very much. As a token of my appreciation, Christmas present, whatever, however you tag it, I'd like to pass out a copy. These are like thirty-some years old. I don't even know if you can get them anymore, so they may be collector's items themselves. But it's a copy of the Constitution of the United States.
Thank you.
Thanks for your service.
Anyone else wishing to speak? This is citizens' time, if you want to speak, you can. Hearing none, I'll close citizens' time. Now we get into our whole business, Animal Control Committee. Who's in charge of that one? I was the chairman?
Yeah.
Yep, you are.
Alrighty, we had two claims come before us. We met December seventh at one thirty, that being Roscoe and myself. We had two claims to consider, the first one being Martha Burke, two ninety-six Packing House Road, Chahawley. She had four ducks, four male ducks that were destroyed by dogs. After review and discussion, Saltville District Supervisor Roscoe Call made a motion to recommend the approval of Smith County Damage Claim Form in the amount of forty dollars. Atkins District Supervisor Charles Atkins seconded the motion, it was unanimously approved. So we were paying ten dollars for each of the male ducks. She, she had, these are a rare breed of ducks, but I don't know if you continue a species with males. If they've been females, I think they might have been worth a little more. But the state code, I think, limits it to ten dollars to fowl, so we, we paid the maximum we could pay under the state code. So any, any further discussion on that? If none, all those in favor paying the forty dollars, say aye.
Have a question before we... The county is paying the damages for the ducks, correct?
Right.
Is there any repercussions back to the, were the dogs wild, or were they pets of somebody?
Could not ascertain who the dogs belong to, so...
Okay.
If we were, just so you know, future, if we can figure, if the animal control can figure out whose dogs they are, it goes back on them. But if we can't ascertain who it is, it comes out of our animal control fund.
Okay.
Which is what happened in this case.
Was the ducks confined or rendered loose?
That I do not know.
No big deal.
When I saw them, they were laying quite, quite stable.
They were ready for fucking.
I'm sorry, I can't...
I just wanted to dug it in.
Alright, call for a vote on that, all those in favor paying the forty dollars, say aye. Aye, any opposed likewise? Alright, our second claim was Ted Hunt, fifteen seventy-six Buckeye Hollow Road, Virginia, Saltville, Virginia. He had two nine-month-old female goats. After review and discussion, Saltville District Supervisor Roscoe Call made a motion to recommend the approval of the Smith County Damage Form in the amount of three hundred dollars. Atkins Supervisor Charles Atkins seconded the motion, it was unanimously approved. Now, I might note, I might note that in getting these claims, animal control works it up. They, they go out and they investigate to make sure it was killed by dogs, or try to ascertain it was killed by dogs, try to figure out whose dogs it was. Then they get, make sure the animal isn't, you know, there is a dead animal involved, in other words, it didn't get buried and they can't see it. And then they get that information, and they go to our extension office and get them. They tell extension what we have, a nine-month-old, and he puts a value on it. The person filing the claim puts a value on it, and then we have, we're regulated by state on how much we can pay on certain species. So we look at all three of those things and decide what amount do we pay. In this case, we valued it higher, I believe, but he put a value, he put a value of a hundred and fifty dollars per animal, so that's what we're paying. Does that make sense? I learned a long time ago, I shouldn't say this in public, but when I had chickens killed, I left that blank. Because my value on them probably wasn't as high as what the code would allow, but we're paying him what he, and you know, they were nine-month-old female goats. So the committee recommendation is to pay him three hundred dollars for the two. Any discussion, any more questions?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I, I don't assign a value to it. The, the Virginia Department of Agriculture reports weekly on what animals were worth, and so I just look it up, and whatever the market was for that particular day or week, then that's what they are. And in your case, you're correct, I remember both these cases. Actually, we don't have anything for poultry, so that threw a kind of kink in that, so the, the ten-dollar limit was invoked there. But those goats, I believe, actually carried a value closer to two hundred dollars on the animal, but on that particular day.
Yes.
But that's, but I, I don't necessarily assign a value, I just look it up and report what the, what the market was for that week.
So y'all have a little idea where we come, you know, we're, we're not just shooting in the dark, we have a little science behind what we do. Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor paying the three hundred, say aye. Any opposed likewise? Alrighty. That was it for the Animal Control, the ARPA Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The ARPA Committee met on Thursday, December second, at four P M. Myself, Ms. Wyatt, Ronnie Corbin, John McLean, Dr. Mike Robinson, Bob DeCamera, Dave Collette, Vincent Adams were in attendance, and staff members present Shawna, Lisa Richardson, Clegg Williams, Paula Harvey, and Kenja Hayden. Accent for that meeting, Kalen Bales, and Supervisor Atkins. I called the meeting to order at four P M, and Clegg welcomed everyone to the meeting and led the discussion. We discussed several ideas for the ARPA funds and how they should be spent in the county. So we kind of went around the room, and oddly enough, everybody kind of had the same input, so that was, that was a good thing, that we were all on the same page, and everybody kind of has the same vision for the county. So we kind of prioritized those, and this is in no particular order, but partnerships with the towns, broadband, water and sewer projects, housing development, generate revenue, grow population, improve the quality of life, support small businesses, support mental health and substance abuse, job training assistance, and mitigate COVID. Discussion regarding the mission and vision of the committee continued, and Mr. Williams added that he would send any application that he receives for the ARPA funds to, to the committee for review and consideration, at least seven days prior to the next meeting. And that, that meeting is going to be January the twentieth, twenty twenty-two, at four P M. We had a really good discussion, and we adjourned at five fifteen.
Alrighty, nothing for us to vote on there, so we move on to the Budget Committee. And the Budget Committee met on December seventh at one o'clock, present with myself and the Ride Valley District Supervisor Lori Deal. I called the meeting to order at one oh one. Assistant County Administrator Lisa Richardson presented the following for consideration. Qualified School Construction Bond, O S C B. When the financing packages was prepared for the Oak Point Elementary Construction and Marion Elementary renovations, a part of the package included a rebate, that's what the county refers to as a Q S C B rebate. Basically, the county made a debt payment which is tied to the interest portion of the payment, and shortly thereafter, a rebate check is returned to the county. For several years, this debt payment was shown on the school board's books, but the check has always been made payable to the county, thus requiring transfer and various other accounting work. With the current fiscal year, the county chose to remove it from the school board's budget altogether, but failed to include the payment in general funds in the amount of four eight hundred and eighty-seven thousand, one hundred and thirteen dollars, thus requiring the budget amendment as attached. A motion was made by Ride Valley District Supervisor Lori Deal to recommend approval of the twenty twenty-two budget amendment number four to include the Qualified School Construction Bond payment request at the amount of four hundred and eighty-seven thousand, one hundred and thirteen dollars. Atkins Supervisor Charles Atkins seconded the motion, and it was unanimously approved. Okay, that's a, that's a committee recommendation. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Alrighty. Mrs. Richardson presented the committee with a draft audit report for review and information, and noted that Emily would be here at the December fourteenth board meeting to present the audit report, as we well know has happened. Mrs. Richardson also discussed the countywide landmine fund issues that the county has been experiencing, and added it is an unbudgeted fix... and added it is an unbudgeted fix that may be required prior to fiscal year twenty-three. The committee members advised the county staff to move forward on obtaining proposals for the countywide fund system replacement immediately, and report back to the Budget Committee as soon as practical. I feel like I need to step in here and add, uh, we didn't approve anything other than getting bids. Anything that gets to be done will come back before the full board. We're not going to spend money without y'all being on board to approve it. But we felt by waiting a month and a half to, we'd just be that much further behind the eight ball, so we went ahead and said, go ahead and get some, um, figures for us. Nothing to vote on or do there. Uh, attached in the booklet is the, that's the amendment, uh, the resolution. While we're there, we also, at your place, we passed out, we had a budget meeting right before. Thank you, I can't find mine. We had a budget meeting right before this meeting tonight, and, uh, myself, all three of us were present, myself, Lori Deal, and Judy Wyatt. The, um, Assistant County Administrator Lisa Richardson presented the following for consideration. The Budget Amendment for American Rescue Plan Act Utility Funding. The state has approved, excuse me, the state has provided the county, town of Chilhali, and the town of Marion with additional funding and from their utility relief fund, remaining funds from the original CARES Act stimulus. Smith County was awarded five thousand, eight hundred fifty-eight dollars and sixty-seven cents, while Chilhali received a hundred and forty-one thousand, nine twenty-eight seventy-four, and Marion received twenty-five thousand, seventy-eight dollars and ninety-eight cents. Since these funds were not in the currently approved budget, Mr. Utte would like to recommend the committee consideration to be enclosed draft budget amendment number five in the amount of a hundred and seventy-two thousand, eight hundred sixty-six dollars. Royal Oak District Supervisor Judy Wyatt made a motion to recommend the approval of the twenty-one, twenty-two Budget Amendment Number Five to include the American Rescue Plan Act Utility Funding in the amount of a hundred and seventy-two thousand, eight hundred sixty-six dollars. Ride Valley Supervisor Lori Deal rejected the motion, and it unanimously approved. Alright, get some budget, uh.
Is that rescue squad money or something? Is that what they do?
No, that's, uh.
What's it for?
It's utilities, water, and sewer.
Water and sewer.
It was free, those accounts that were past due more than ninety days, as of August thirty-first, uh, twenty twenty-one.
They throw more money at us.
So, I noticed. But there's, there's a township missing in that, but why would Saltwell be excluded from that?
I understand the towns, all of them didn't apply for the funds, uh, this time. It was, you had to apply ahead of time, it wasn't, uh, given out as a formula like some of the last funds were, so you, um, they didn't apply for it this time.
Was the town notified of that, Shawna?
Yes, sir.
It was not, because you asked them.
That's not.
Yeah, but it wasn't funded at a hundred percent, so everyone asked for more than that, but they took, they had a ratio across the state of what they used, and, so.
Did you have to tell them what you're going to spend it on upfront, or?
It has to be applied to the past due accounts for those customers, directly to their accounts. So now the county will write checks to the Smith County Water Department directly into those customers' accounts that were past due.
Okay.
So maybe Saltwell didn't have any past due.
Oh, yeah.
I'm trying to give a bit of a.
I'm just trying to get my, my defense up, because I know what's coming.
Right.
Alrighty, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favors, this amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise. Alright, amendment passes. Alright, uh, going back now to the Orders Committee.
I believe that's me, Mr. Chairman.
Alrighty.
Uh, I opened the meeting at two o'clock, me and Charlie present, Phil is absent, the town of Town, I believe. How was somewhere else? Yeah, besides you. Uh, Ms. Richardson presented the following for review, the proposed junior firefighter program. During a recent Public Safety Committee meeting, the group discussed a countywide junior firefighter program. According to state code, due to liability issues, a governing body, such as the Board of Supervisors, is required to adopt an ordinance designated to program. Uh, Mr. Atkins made a motion to recommend the staff to develop a draft ordinance for the county junior firefighter program. Saltwell District Supervisor Roscoe Call seconded the motion, it was unanimously approved. Committee recommendation, Mr. Chairman.
Alright, folks, you understand what we're, all we're doing here in this, with this motion is to, send it to the Ordinance Committee to draft the ordinance. We're not passing the ordinance, we're just asking them to draft this one, so, uh. Nothing is going into law on this. Any further discussion?
I have a question, what, what actually defines a junior firefighter? Is it age or experience, or?
Age.
So what, what, what age are they? Did they go from junior to?
Um, sixteen to seventeen.
Yeah, sixteen.
Fifteen to seventeen.
Ages sixteen and seventeen.
Okay, sixteen and seventeen-year-olds are junior firefighters?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
But they're limited to what they can do.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
But it's, it gets them started.
Walks very carefully.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favors, say aye. Any opposed likewise. Motion passes.
Okay, our next item, Mr. Chairman, transit occupancy tax amendments. Commissioner Revenue Jeff Richardson provided a presentation to the committee regarding the transit occupancy tax. He noted that there are several changes to the Code of Virginia that better define who is required to pay the tax, and ways to collect it as well. He provided some handouts as well as for the committee's review and information. Discussion ensued, Mr. Atkins made a motion to recommend directing staff to develop a draft ordinance to amend the Smith County Code regarding the transit occupancy tax as recommended by the Commissioner of Revenue, Saltwell District, myself seconded the motion, it was unanimous.
Alrighty, committee recommendation, any discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favors, say aye. Excuse me?
It mentions that there was a handout to the committee, Commissioner, would it be possible for, to get a copy of that handout?
Well, I'd say so, I don't have it with me.
I believe it's there on page one fifty-four through one fifty-nine, one sixty.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, for, for the elderly and disabled?
No, that's a proposed revision to the tax relief.
Uh, the elderly and disabled, I believe it's on one fifty-eight, one fifty-nine, and then.
Right, but this is the transit, the transient.
Transit tax.
It says there is a handout.
It, it had a, showed figures on how they figured it, going, use percentages and stuff.
I, I've had questions in my district, so I would like, that would be helpful to get a copy of that.
Ms. Wyatt said, did you get a copy?
Okay, I didn't bring it back.
Do I have a motion, we just floor table this to our next meeting then?
So, uh.
Alright, we have a table, well, I guess we need to vote down the motion we have first, so. Um, everybody needs to vote no on this one, and, uh, we're voting on transit occupancy, transit occupancy tax. All those in favors, say aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
The noes have it.
I thought this was just for them to draft and.
Yeah, we're going to hold off, so we should do that.
Well, I think it's such an important issue, because that involves like Airbnb's and any rentals and all that, and, you know, we're getting a lot of questions, so let's get a good highlighter. So, if the commissioner made a recommendation, I think it's prudent to inform them.
Well, and there needs to be language in there to reconcile it, because from what I understand, there are some acronym agencies out there that are renting short-term houses that are collecting taxes, but yet they're not being returned back to the municipalities that are supposed to be paid those, so somehow they're. Exactly, they're not turning them in, so we need to find a way to reconcile those.
But also, one person in my district, I think it was through, through one of the Airbnb's. The Airbnb is remitting it to Smith County, and yet the commissioner was charging that person, wanting him to come up and pay that tax, and it had already been remitted through.
But that was one of the questions, one of the items that Mr. Richardson brought to us, there's a couple of those agencies that are renting Airbnb's, they will pay him the money, but they won't tell him who they're paying for.
Yeah, well, you know, again, we're trying to encourage tourism and that type of thing in the county. So I just think we need to get our ducks in a row, and we need to.
It's basically the same thing, it's just a paper that shows a better way to collect it. It's being collected, but they don't know where half of it's coming from, and half of it's not being collected from the people, but not turned into the.
Well, and then the commissioner's going to these people saying, you need to pay me a hundred dollars or something today.
Right.
So, getting to be a little bit of a problem.
Make a motion, we table it to our next meeting, so we get some more information.
Okay, have a motion, so have a second. Any other discussion on table? All those in favors, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that'll be on our next agenda, hopefully.
Okay, one more, Mr. Chairman, you go ahead. Uh, proposed revision to the senior citizen tax relief. Commissioner Revenue, Mr. Richardson discussed necessary updates to the county's tax relief program, and had specifically that it had been six years since the qualifying income level for real estate relief for the elderly or permanently totally disabled had been adjusted. He noted that he would like to recommend increasing that amount from the current twenty-five thousand dollars to twenty-seven thousand dollars. Mr. Richardson also discussed a potential elimination of the sliding scale qualification. He noted that over half of these seniors who qualify already received the maximum amount of relief, and the elimination of the sliding scale would result in an overall loss of four thousand dollars. However, he noted that this elimination would also result in an overall increase in workload efficiency for his staff. Discussion ensued. Mr. Atkins made a motion to recommend directing staff to develop a draft ordinance that would eliminate the sliding states qualifications to allow seniors who are eligible, to be eligible for the maximum relief, and to increase the real estate relief for the elderly and permanently totally disabled from twenty-five thousand to twenty-seven thousand. I seconded the motion, it was unanimous. Committee recommendation.
Committee recommendation, any further discussion?
I would say twenty-seven's enough. I think we ought to give it thirty, but. Well, I agree. Where I'm at, I mean, your elderly, they've done their thing, we ought to give them all the relief when we give them, so, you know. I don't think.
I thought the same thing.
I think twenty-seven thousand dollars is a drop in a bucket, I don't know that thirty's even high enough, but I feel better at thirty than I do at twenty-seven.
Mr. Chairman, I would say, if, if you direct staff to draft the ordinance as recommended by the committee, I can check that number to see if we have ability to change that, or if that's some kind of number from some table somewhere that we have to follow. And then I can bring that with the draft ordinance, then the next step for you all would be to set a public hearing on the draft ordinance, so we can discuss it then and move the number before you set the public hearing.
I'm good with that.
Okay.
Me too.
How do we dispose of the motion we have in front of us?
Just move forward with it, and then we can just.
Yeah, I think the motion is to recommend staff to draft an ordinance.
Okay. All those in favor doing as, as we just discussed, say aye. Any opposed likewise? Sounds like it's unanimous.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Alright. I'd like to note on that, it, with the, even moving it to twenty-seven, it costs less than four thousand dollars, so.
Yeah, I, I wish, I wish. More than reasonable. I wish we could eliminate property tax for people over eighty years old. They've done their part, they don't need that too.
Alrighty, moving on to, uh, that was the ordinance committee. I guess we're, Public Safety Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, I'll try to be brief through these six pages of notes, but the Public Safety Committee met on Tuesday, December seventh at eleven A M. Presenting myself, Supervisor Michael Sturgill, absent was Supervisor Ratliff, staff members present, Shawna, Lisa Richardson, Paula Harvey, Curtis Crawford, Shannon Williams. Also in attendance was, uh, our O N D. Dr. Peter Bruso, Chief Deputy Joanna, and Major Levins from the Sheriff's Department. I called the meeting to order at eleven oh two, and the first item we discussed is our automatic aid discussion, which you all heard us discuss several times. Curtis Crawford discussed and presented the Fire Department Auto Aid Draft, and just for informational purposes, uh, this draft actually went out to all of the fire chiefs in the county, they discussed this at their chief's meeting that they have monthly. Um, everybody's input was considered, and that's how the final draft, uh, came forward. This is going to be presented to all three county councils, and then it's, uh, before us tonight. So, uh, Chilhali District Supervisor Michael Sturgill made a motion to recommend the approval of the county fire department automatic aid agreement to the Board of Supervisors. I seconded the motion, and it was unanimous, unanimously approved, and is a committee recommendation.
Okay, any discussion? Alrighty, all those in favor of the automatic aid, aid agreement, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise? Alrighty, got that one going on.
Alright, next item, we discussed ordinances. Curtis Crawford discussed private ambulance services and how to better control the calls that are, they are transporting, including, uh, nine-one-one emergency calls. Mr. Crawford advised that the county should look at what other counties are doing to address the issue. I inquired about public education on the issue, and Mr. Crawford agreed that with the changes that have occurred recently with the overall EMS system in the past year, that reeducation is needed to advertise the quality of services that are now being provided by public entities. Uh, Mr. Crawford also suggested to take, uh, the month to look further, to look to further lay out options for future committee considerations. So, he actually brought some ordinance, ordinances from other counties for us to look at, so at our next meeting, we're going to be determining which one is the best option for us, and we'll bring that back to this board at our, after our next meeting. Any questions on that? Alright, moving on to school zone and work zone enforcement. Uh, this is one I'm, I'm personally excited about, obviously our children, um, are, are important to us and their safety. And we recently learned, um, about a new program out there, uh, when Mr. Utte and Mr. Atkins and myself were at the VACA meeting in Norfolk. Um, this program is actually set up to enforce speeding in school zones and work zones. Uh, so, this is a no cost to the county, uh, the funds are actually collected by, uh, this company, and then they keep a percentage off the top and send the funds to us, um, that are collected from the fines that are given in those school zones and work zones. Uh, so, Deputy Chief Julian advised that he would have further information from the Commonwealth Attorney's Office, because there was a couple of questions about how a Commonwealth attorney would be involved. Uh, and he and the sheriff are going to bring that back to the next Public Safety Committee meeting. So we're going to have a meeting with that company and continue conversation with the Commonwealth Attorney and the Sheriff's Department to hopefully, hopefully move forward with that program. Happy to answer questions if there are any.
Mr. Chairman, um, is, is, am I understanding that there's going to be like a, an officer radaring, or is it going to be camera-based, or?
Camera-based.
Is camera-based allowed in Virginia?
Yes.
I asked the same question.
It's, it's allowed in school zones and work zones only, but it is allowed.
And we asked to get an opinion from Roy Evans, and also from Chip Schiller, Sheriff's Department, see what their thoughts are on it, so.
And one of the reasons, um, we were really interested is particularly if there's, uh, an accidental anyone that shuts the interstate down and traffic has to be diverted along Route eleven. You have Chilhali High School, Chilhali Middle School, you have Chilhali Elementary School, you have Atkins Elementary School that are all right there, and it's very easy for those folks who are already in a hurry, because they're being delayed to speed in those areas.
I, I'm not against it, uh, my son lives up in DC, and there is a red light camera that is just banking the coffers of the city of DC at this one spot. So, if it's legal in Virginia, I'm all for the safety component of it.
Great. Any other questions? Okay, moving on to emergency medical dispatch. Our nine-one-one coordinator, Shannon Williams, advised that the final emergency management dispatch training was in process, and that the projected go-live day will be December twenty-ninth at six A M. Uh, we are required to be live by January first, but obviously we didn't want to wait till, uh, the, the very last minute to, to go live, so we wanted a couple of days to. so we wanted a couple of days to iron out any issues, if, if there are any. Dr. Bruzo advised that he felt that extra information given during the final trainings had been very helpful and much needed, and that it addressed weak points in the training thus far. And just to elaborate a little bit, Dr. Bruzo and Shannon and Curtis actually went in, went to like an in-depth training with, with the dispatchers, uh, some, what's the word I'm looking for? Shucks. What is, when you do like the training?
Scenario.
In service.
In service, thank you, it is in-service training, sorry, my mind, it's late in the day. So that way, when there is a nine-one-one call that comes in, uh, it won't be the first time that they've heard a certain scenario. So they actually went through all possible scenarios of a nine-one-one call, and the dispatchers were able to do that. So hopefully, when they go live, they'll, they'll be comfortable, but encourage them if you see them, because this is, this is a huge deal. It's a big undertaking, it's, it's a lot of stress on our dispatchers, so when you see them out, definitely encourage them. Moving on to language line, Mr. Williams discussed the need for a language line that could be used by dispatch and law enforcement to help translate conversations into multiple languages. Mr. Crawford advised the need to make the language line in a countywide resource, but, but that it could be moved to the next budget year if needed. Mr. Up added that he thinks the cost would not be an issue, and since the need is there, he would recommend moving forward with it. And I'll, uh, look down the line here to Courtney, I'm sure you can attest to some of the situations you all get in where communication is a challenge because of different languages, so. And this covers every language, it doesn't matter Portuguese, Spanish, whatever it is, this service can translate. And it's based on the call, so it's bill per minute. So it's not a certain amount we have to pay every year for the service, it's just on an as-needed basis. So, Chilhalla District Supervisor Michael Sturgill made a motion to recommend entering into contract with Voice Language Services LLC for a language line for dispatch and law enforcement agencies, I seconded the motion, and it was unanimously approved.
Do we have any idea of the cost?
It's sixty-five cents per minute. Oh, I'm sorry, it's sixty-eight cents per minute, and sign language is a dollar twenty-five per minute.
And you can all do sign language if it would be a voice, like a video call.
Zoom or video call.
Correct.
All right, any other questions?
So, if someone calls in on the nine-one-one and they're speaking a language other than English, would that translate it right on the spot for the dispatcher, would they have to say, hold on, let me get someone to come?
They actually have a number that, that, it's a one-eight-hundred number that they would call and join the call.
Gotcha.
And they would translate it back and forth between the caller and the dispatcher. Or also, if an officer stops a vehicle and can't communicate, he can use his cellphone, he or she can use his cellphone to call the one-eight-hundred number and put it on speaker and communicate that way as well.
So if a deputy was out on a situation, with somebody who didn't speak English, it could be a lengthy conversation after a while, by the time you commute to the dispatcher and the deputy back, am I correct?
Not necessarily, we, we've used interpreters in the past. And usually, just getting the, the basic information we need, it, it really doesn't take, don't take long.
For the deputy's sake, they would call the number directly, they wouldn't have to go through dispatch to do it. So it would, they would just call on their cell phone, put it on speaker.
They're on the spot, they don't.
Correct, they wouldn't have to route the dispatcher.
You know, uh, we don't, we speak a lot of language besides English, and somebody, a deputy out there, talking to somebody who can't understand what they're saying, ain't good for either ends.
No.
So, you know, I hate to keep spending money, but where it's got to be spent is, and it's critical, so.
Need to, while we're getting, getting into that, we need to look at their radio system too, because it's getting bad.
Yeah, that's in, in here, on down a little bit.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Good segue.
All right, we have a, any more discussion on this, uh, language line? Here you go, all those in favor signify by saying aye? Aye, any opposed? Sounds like we passed that, next.
All right, with the implementation of emergency medical dispatch, there's a need for a trainer. So Mr. Williams discussed that when new hires are brought on for training, will take up to approximately six months to complete if we use the company that we got the services from. So, to, to save money and time, it's actually more advantageous for us to use an in-house instructor, which is what most localities are doing anyway. Mr. Williams added that currently only one dispatcher meets the requirement to be an instructor, and she has offered to be the instructor and requested twenty dollars per hour, which is likely to be completed within twelve to fifteen hours for each new employee. A discussion ensued, and the committee agreed that the sheriff should move forward using that employee in that structure. Part-time pay, Mr. Williams noted that the emergency medical dispatch training, full-time dispatchers currently are receiving a two-thousand-dollar incentive. Part-time dispatchers have remained constant through these changes with a rate of twelve dollars per hour. Mr. Williams suggested that the county should consider increasing part-time hourly rate to be closer to the hourly rate of a full-time employee. I agreed with making the adjustment to show equality with full-time dispatcher rates. Shawna advised that he can look at the budget to do calculations and to adjust those part-time rates to match the full-time. He's going to actually report back to the next committee, so no action was taken, it was just an information purposes. But I had assumed that that was already happening, so I'm not sure why it was an oversight in the past, but we'll have more to come on that. New hires, Mr. William, Williams advised that two of the three new nine-one-one dispatch positions were funded this fiscal year, I've been field, and noted that there is still one more needed, so if you know anyone who would make a good dispatcher, please direct them to the Sheriff's Department. Radio feasibility study, Mr. Williams advised that the radio feasibility study is moving right along and looks to be completed after the first of twenty-twenty-two. He advised he will have some cost estimates for the sites and information on how many sites will be needed in order to meet those projected needs. And he hopes to have a draft, draft report in January, so this is actually something we've been talking about for several months. It's, it's going to be quite a substantial cost, uh, right now, just so you're aware, and you have a real understanding. Our radio system is out of date, it, it, basically, we're hoping that we can find parts on eBay and install them ourselves. If, if it goes down, we are screwed, just to put it out there bluntly. So we're probably looking at anywhere between a ten and twelve million dollar cost, and it's something that, that we're going to have to do.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I thought with the first round of COVID money, we had talked about when the radio system for the Sheriff's Department.
I think we talked about it, but nothing was ever spent or done on it.
Yeah, we hadn't completed the, we jumped on with twin counties and their radio feasibility study, because they're doing theirs at the same time, so it was a cost savings for us to join in together.
It's just a shame that it's been delayed, because I thought last year we started their process.
Right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
What about some of this money coming up in this other round, can we use some of that on there?
Correct me if I'm wrong, mister, but I believe that public safety is part of what some of that funding can be for.
Yes, ma'am, we can, we can certainly put it in front of the ARPA committee to, uh, to, to address, I guess, one of the things that the ARPA committee's been trying to do is, is do generational type spending, and if it's a normal day-to-day type, um, steered more back toward the, um, the CIP and general fund budget, but we could certainly take it to the ARPA committee, sure.
Now, here's what I'm looking at, Al, if we're talking about ten or twelve million dollars, it, it can be very generational, because if we use ten or twelve million dollars on radios, and we're looking at who knows what on EMS in the next coming budget, we're going to be hit with a big budget next year. And I get the generational thing, I was the one who's on board for it, but if we need to pull something out of there for general safety that's going to, going to save us something down the road, you know. My concern is, we're looking at a lot of things in this next coming year that's going to be devastating. And we'd better be, start marking down on our tablet, I got a hundred dollars for this and a hundred dollars for that, because our biggest responsibility is to the people that put us in here. And, you know, I get new business, I get it all, but if we need twelve million dollars and the government's handing us twelve million dollars to radios, hey, I don't need to be on the committee to know where it needs to go. You see how I feel about it, because we, we looking at radios, you know, we hear, we sitting here, we just talked about the possibility of moving dispatchers up in pay, and I get it, I'm for it, I don't know how anybody works for that often. But we got to be able to pay for all this stuff down the road. So, I guess if we're looking at that, next committee meeting you have with them, I, they need to talk about this.
Mr. Chairman, one more question.
Yes, ma'am.
In that original budgeting of the COVID money, is my understanding that some of the things we didn't really have to do, the expenditure, it was almost like it could be an accrual to be paid out later, with some financing, that the school board was going to be able to delay some of their spending or whatever, and that that would give us some autonomy to, to work with the money better. So, was none of that money still available to go towards this radio system? Do you know what I'm talking about?
You're talking about CARES Act money?
Uh-huh. Originally, last year, the first, first part of it, because the school board was able to manage their money to where we could, Charlie, you're reading the discussion well. So where is that money in our budget then?
It's, it's my understanding that it was incorporated into the, the overall schools budget to keep us from having to bring more to the table this current fiscal year.
Yes.
They use some of that rubber, um, and their extra money has to go toward, um, a certain percentage has to go toward COVID-related, specifically COVID-related, and at, um, school, I can't remember the term, but basically, um, kids that need more help in the, in the learning. And then the rest of it's going toward groups, HVACs, school repairs that we haven't been able to do in the last several, many years.
There was one, like stuff we couldn't apply for, because if you use so much money in HVAC, which our buildings are old, and also your schools in Southwest Virginia all use that, then you couldn't apply for this money, because you. So the school system, so the counties who had newer buildings, just got to win.
Yeah, I, I'm familiar with that, but I thought, so, I know that was a big thing that we talked about in our budget committee that year. So, was the money spent somewhere else then?
Where did we spend the county's portion of the CARES Act money?
I mean, it's, we, where we talked about, that was a priority, I thought, that radio system. But anyway, that might be something to double check on, because it is a lot of money that's going to have to be.
Right, and this is a good example of why it's important to have a capital improvement plan, because this system is so out of date, like, it, it, we would be facing twelve million dollar expense had this been addressed, like, as you go.
Well, but, we've all, last year we were hit with tremendous increase in cost for EMS, millions of dollars. Also, there's the accounting system, so we did start the capitalist, capital improvements line item. So that's what I'm wondering, with some of that capital improvements money, we've got a lot of designated, I'm like, it's like what Phil's saying, all of a sudden you're saying we're going to use one a hundred dollars for three or four different things. And that's where, if it was designated, I guess it wasn't then, that's, that's unfortunate.
Well, I, you know, whatever happened in the past has happened, and I get what you're saying, but we got, we're tasked with fixing it. So, I just want to, if we're getting some, which we are, some federal money down, we may want to make sure that we put it in places and we don't break it back to the taxpayers coming this budget. I, you know, I, I, I get having a group of people, and that's a good team. But I think we need to stay focused on paying bills.
Correct.
So.
Well, and, and just, I don't want to speak for the full ARPA committee, but that's six million dollars, is that correct?
Five point nine.
Five point nine million dollars, so that would cover about half of what we're looking at. So if we're thinking that we are going to earmark that for a radio system, then I, I would rather just tell the ARPA committee now, hey, this is an expense we're going to have to make, and I don't want to waste their time coming to meetings if we're not going to.
I don't think that's reasonable to, to develop the money, personally, I don't.
Curtis, I'm sorry. I was just going to say, do I, do I remember in the radio meetings, that they were saying that we have some grants that we can apply for that would help? Do I remember that correctly?
Uh, yes, there are some grants to apply for, uh, but, uh, again, it's, it's not going to cover the full price.
No, yeah, there are grants, there were grants that we could, there, there's some other funding sources that will help pay that bill, I want to, be all of us.
So, may, I agree, may I speak?
Go ahead.
I agree with what you just said, I don't want to waste somebody's time, and I, we don't know how much a grant money, or we're pretty sure this radio system is going to be ten to twelve million dollars.
Let me say this, I, when, when we're looking at an expense, I, I always look on the high end of it, so if, if it comes in at eight million, then that's great, if, if I tell you all it's going to cost six million, and then it comes in at fifteen million.
Well, we're looking at eight million on the low end and twelve million on the high.
Eight to twelve, it could be.
You know, it may be not beyond our realm to tell that committee, look, you know. I mean, I asked John McClane to serve on that, I know his time's valuable, but if we're not going to get enough money to cover this, we might all be saying, hey, we, we got to hold it off here, we see.
And we got to look at the financing, it could be that we use a down, use part of that money to make a down payment, to set up financing on it.
Well, yeah, that's very true, and that's a little bit above my realm, but we need to be thinking about how we're going to pay for it.
Yeah, because then you've got the debt service. Anyway.
Who's, who's figuring, do you have a company on that, Lori, is it?
That's doing the feasibility study.
Federal Communications.
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
Federal Communications, it's a Northern Virginia group.
And if, and if I, may I speak? Go right ahead, Mike. If I remember, there were some pros and cons to whether you go digital, right now we presently have analog, and what I remember from that meeting is, digital, you either have service or you don't. It's just, it's, in other words, analog, sometimes, like we have a bus, school system with buses, if they're up in Holler, it's actually, the analog actually covers very, better, some of those areas, am I correct? But you, you may have a little static, but you could still hear the conversation, but with digital, you either got it, or you don't have it, it just cuts off, so. There's some pros and cons to both, is my understanding, what I remember from the meeting, so, uh, but it, you know, it'll depend on, and I think it was looking at going from four, they, they recommended nine towers, do I remember that?
That's what they're looking at, possibly, right now.
At, which would be adding five towers, that would possibly, so there's, there's a couple, there's going to be some options on the routes, I think that we go, as far as what's the option.
We still look at it.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, because like I said, right now, our sys, like, our system is outdated, it's not supported. If it goes down, it's a hope and a prayer that Shannon can find the part on eBay and figure out how to install it himself. That is not a good position to be in, there's, there's places in this county where officers can't get back to dispatch on their mobile or their portable. There's places where EMS is on a call, and they go in somebody's house, they have to step outside to talk to dispatch, like, it's, it's not good. Just to be forthcoming.
I, I've said it twice, I'm going to say it one more time, we might be, ought to be here tagging the money that's coming to us for EMS and services like this, because that looks like our biggest challenge for the next year.
I know it's a different animal, but I also think broadband can play into this also, to a certain extent, there's going to be a lot of state and federal money being designated from broadband, and if, you know, we, we got some opportunity there, I think, I don't know how much, but hopefully that could help a little bit.
Yeah, that's money we could use too. I just want, I, the cost is, is unfortunate that it's that much, but.
We can't ignore as much as we can get in that.
Correct, we, we have to add it, this is, and I'm, what they're going to do is present different options for us, so the, the Pinto version, the Chevy Malibu version, and Mercedes version, which obviously I'm not a pro for the Mercedes version, but I also feel like we need to have. the Mercedes version, but I also feel like we need to have adequate coverage. And something that we know, okay, this is gonna last you for ten years. So that way we can say, okay, so here's what we need to be planning for and upgrading and doing. So ten years from now, whoever's sitting on this board is not facing with this ten million, ten or twelve million dollar cost because we failed to do our jobs.
I'm not for a Mercedes version either unless you're having to buy new and then buy the best you can get. Because in the long run, it'd be the cheapest thing you could do.
Right.
If I, if I may, Mr. Chairman? Go right ahead. Timing wise, the ARPA committee has another meeting in January and isn't expected to meet again until late spring, early summer. The, um, the report should be back from federal by mid-January, mid to late January. So I think we have some time before, um, to, to start contemplating costs before the ARPA committees really want, um, want to be, looking to, to recommend expenditures anyway, so I think we can, we can work the timing out.
Okay. Any other comments on that? Earring Ben and Lori next.
All right, the next item we discussed is the Active Shooter Workshop. Mr. Crawford discussed the Active Shooter Workshop in front of the committee with a copy of the summary report for information and review. Uh, Mr. Crawford advised that things were going well with the development of the Active Shooter exercise that is tentatively planned for June twenty twenty two. He noted that the work is being funded by a grant but requested an additional thousand dollars due to the ballistic plates cost increase. Discussion ensued and Supervisor Sturgill made a motion to recommend sending the request to the Budget Committee to consider a budget amendment in the amount of a thousand dollars to cover the additional costs in ballistic plates. And I seconded the motion, it was unanimously approved. That is a committee recommendation.
So we're just voting to send this to the Budget Committee?
That's correct.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, pass.
This next item says radio feasibility study, but that is actually not what it is. Um, this is budget requests from firing EMS departments. And Mr. Crawford provided a budget worksheet that has already been provided to the county firing EMS departments and advised that during the February first, twenty twenty two meeting, departments would be presenting their budget paperwork to the committee to provide budget details to allow them to have a chance to ask for budget funding for the upcoming fiscal year. No further business to discuss, we adjourned at twelve twelve.
Okay, thank you very much. Now we have one item of new business, a shared solar work group discussion. Sean, are you here, ma'am?
Um, you have in your packet, and I think I forwarded an email to everyone about the shared solar initiative that's going out in Southwest Virginia. I've reached out to Mr. Couts and, um, he has reached out to every locality, basically from Kielaski County West. Um, thus far, he has the city of Norton, a few other small towns and, um, uh, why it's county have committed. So this is a fairly young initiative, but I did ask him to, uh, to give you some more information uh, about what, what's expected of us, what, what, uh, so I don't have much other than what's in the, the packet there. Um, he has offered to come to a future board meeting to, to talk about it or, or if we wanted to forward this to a committee for their consideration. I don't know which committee it would be, unless maybe the Budget Committee. But I guess I'd look, look at your, at the board for, um, directions on how you'd like to, to proceed. I guess.
Go ahead, Phil.
This, I don't totally understand who these guys with.
Okay, so if, there's a nonprofit coalition that's basic, if, that takes a step back. Um, on the eastern side of Virginia, Dominion Power is required to provide, um, solar energy to, um, a certain percentage of solar energy to municipal governments. Um, that same requirement is not out there for Appalachian power.
Yeah, I get all that. The guy that gave you this information, who, who's he with? Is he a nonprofit organization?
Yes, yes, they're, they're a nonprofit organization, Appalachian Boys is.
Okay, that, that was my question.
I'm sorry, yes, sir.
I, I think it'd be a good thing, at least to pursue and see what, you know, it might be something that we, you know, we always say no. I'm certainly an advocate for it.
Only other question I would have is if we make some kind of commitment for this now, what's it, obligate us some down the road? When they go putting in solar panels, this is, I know you and I, Clay, have talked about this issue. They, they've hit Rich Valley hard wanting to put up solar panels. And I don't know how many of y'all have ever traveled. I travel a lot, monthly, sometimes biweekly. And I've been to places in North Carolina that has boot koodles of these solar panels. And let me tell you, it is AI solar. And sometimes you sell your community for a dollar. It's kinda like, don't sell your soul. And, you know, in Rich Valley, they've been going through and going to certain farms and wanting to get to contracts on solar panels and stuff, and I can see a lot of stuff unfolding here. And it, right now, it hadn't never made it to this point, but it's one of the main topics I hear going in the store or in my yard of who's against it. And I just wanna be cautious moving forward on anything that we don't commit ourselves to say, okay, we said we want a solar power, now we wanna put stick 'em there for you, see what I'm saying? So.
I think what we take away from tonight's meeting is the fact we need more information. Get him down here, let him speak to us, look at the handouts he has, do a little investigating on our own, so to speak. And maybe we can talk about a little more understanding in next meeting or in early January.
Yes, and I'd like to get some more feedback from the, from our peers around Southwest also.
Right, and I agree with what Phil said, when you, what, what gets me is I've been talking and asked some questions too. When you see somebody offering fifteen thousand dollars an acre for land they could get for a thousand dollars an acre, that throws up a red flag to me. And you speak nonprofit, a hundred acres land, bringing over a million dollars, they said, there's gonna be some profit there somewhere. I just hope we all think about as we move further, getting information on, that we think about what beautiful community we live in. And I just hate to see it scarred with a bunch of solar panels. I'll pay my electric bill to keep my community pretty. So I just hope we move forward with caution.
I talked to some Appalachia people too, and they said they want no part in it. You know, what are you gonna do? They got the lines.
Well, I think that's what these people are wanting, is it not? Is this force our, a bill be passed where Appalachia would have to allow them to do it? Am I reading it right?
I think they.
Right now Appalachia don't, they don't accept it, but if a bill went through Mr. Turney, then they'd have to, right?
I don't know the answer to that. I know there's solar project projects going on in With County and Kielaski County. And the idea is they put up those panels and whoever's putting those panels up are selling electricity to somebody. And the only way to get it transported is to put it on Appalachians' lines and they sell it to Old Dominion. You know, somehow they move that power and count it. I'm not sure how they do that. If Appalachians not buying it, it seems strange to me that they'd be putting them up in Kielaski and With, but I don't know.
Uh, I'm, I'm gonna teach already, I think we need to get this guy here.
Yeah, we need, we need more information before we even ask the right questions.
Yeah, I started that bad with these left on land and everything.
All right, so that's where we'll leave it, Sean, for you to get us more information, educate us.
Yes, sir.
Now we're down to item eleven on our agenda, which is report from the county attorney. Mr. Scott?
Good evening. Uh, not a lot to report on, and you guys won't be real happy about that, I guess, but I'm getting there, very, very slowly. I know a lot, a lot of stuff I'm working on for Clay and some zoning issues, um, that I'm trying to figure out, and then I step away from it for a little bit and then all of a sudden three weeks is gone and where'd that time go? Um, so that's part of my own self-management problem. The Galhan case, where he was challenged in the water bill thing, there's a hearing next week, just for your information. The attorney from the interims company filed a similar motion that Don and I filed, which was, you didn't do it right and asking the court to dismiss it. So that hearing's next week, we'll see how that goes. Uh, opioid settlement is progressing on. We had some forms that Sean executed yesterday or today uh, that was recommended by our counsel, which is essentially saying, uh, if all the participating localities participate that they want, then we release these four companies from any claim we have against them. But if they don't get the right number of claims or localities participating, then our release is canceled and we can continue with litigation or whatever we choose to do with that. So those were executed by Sean and sent on to our counsel for the opioid stuff. The ordinances from the ordinance committee, that's on my plate. Uh, we, I attended that meeting by Zoom or conference call. So I need to draft those ordinances. The transit occupancy tax thing, uh, I did have that on my computer and emailed it to all of you. So there was a PowerPoint presented to the committee and I was given a copy of that, so I just forwarded that all to you guys so that you can see that information. Copied Sean, so Sean can forward you any additional information he may have, uh, from what I just sent you. Solar panels, I've kind of worked on a little bit. There is a siding agreement that can be had if a company comes to the county and says, we wanna do a solar project. There's a code section, I'm still trying to figure out how it works, but, uh, they're supposed to come and ask for a siding agreement with us, whether you have zoning or not. Part of that discussion is, can we do a, uh, bond for reclamation? Right? So they don't leave the batteries or the stuff behind. And that's an interesting issue because these things are supposed to last twenty-five, thirty years, right? And then they're supposed to carry bond, that meaning, that number of years, I'm not sure how that will play out. Uh, but you have the blessing of having zoning, uh, and I don't know how that affects with solar projects um, and how the zoning ordinance would address that or special exceptions or however that would work to get a solar project in Smith County. So we'll learn as we go. Um, if I hear something of interest that may apply to you, I will pass it along. Uh, that's all I have. Do you have any questions for me?
Mr. Person, my case, do you know if it's been served yet?
Uh, I sent an email last night asking if that guy had success and he did not respond, so I will try to call him tomorrow. And if he does not have success, we'll just have to hire a private investigator to chase her, so.
I probably need to ask, I probably need to ask this question for our, of our commissioner of revenue, but let's say we do end up getting a solar farm on seven hundred acres of land. The vast majority of their project is equipment. Is that not everybody's understanding?
It's like machinery and tools, right?
Real estate value may even go down on it. And you got machinery and tools, so, you know, I don't know how advantageous, and this is just me thinking, but now putting my foot in my mouth probably, but I don't know how advantageous that would be in the county, you know, ten years down the road if.
If you depreciate that equipment, the value goes down obviously over time. But there is another option that you can use if you have that large of a project. You can option out of the personal property tax on these projects and tax, uh, they call it a revenue sharing tax. So then we get a percentage of the kilowatts that they produce. So we're essentially taxing the energy they produce. So the producer from the panels, if he, I don't know if it's kilowatts or how they measure that thing, but the more energy they produce off of that project, the more tax we collect. So then there's a cost benefit analysis of, do we do better taxing this expensive equipment? That depreciates over seven to ten years, that slowly goes down. Or do we tax the energy that hopefully will go up, right? Uh, and then it's a, it's a math problem that I don't understand, but smarter people can figure that out as to where does that lie, right?
I think it's something we need to look at before we have someone knocking on our door and at least have some conceptual understanding of where we wanna go with it.
But you do have that option, and I don't know what the zoning requirements would be if, if they came, if you got a project that presented to us, you know, what do they have to do for zoning? I know they are supposed to come with a comprehensive plan and say, um, our project is in compliance with the comprehensive plan. With County's comprehensive plan didn't really address solar projects at all. Uh, there was some language that we, they kind of hung their hat on, you know? But it, it's a, just an analysis problem. Uh, I don't know if Clay has heard from the planning people that he may hear from as far as throughout the state, how they're dealing with that. I've not heard a lot, um, other than what I've experienced myself. But yes, I, if you can get ahead of it, that's better. I just don't know how to get you there, so.
Okay.
If our zoning covers, does it have to have a special use permit, right?
For, for most districts, yes. And, and he's right, it needs to be recognized in the comp plan. Some of you may remember when CPV came through and wanted to establish a gas-fired facility in Atkins. And their attorneys recognized right off the bat that it wasn't recognizing our comp plan. So they petitioned the board, first and foremost, change your comp plan. So I would think that would be the first step. Um, and then yes, if it's allowed in whatever district they're looking at, um, in every district we do allow generation facilities, it requires a special use permit, so they would have to apply public hearing, um, and go through the process.
I think the President's allowing a lot of free money on this going green stuff, it's something we're gonna have to address.
And Richmond, Richmond's doing the same thing. Richmond's doing the same thing. I think there's money for.
I'd say it's coming our way, we're gonna have to deal with the issue sooner or later.
Yeah. Thank you. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you very much, Sean. Mr. Sean, do you have any report for us tonight, or?
Just have two quick things for you. Um, you, at your desk, you should have a printout for, from Kendra of the broadband summary, Smith County Broadband Initiative. Um, good news, um, we just, I think it was yesterday, it was announced that the governor awarded Mount Rogers uh, area for Smith, With and Washington, sixty-five, just shy of sixty-six million dollars in grant funds, um, will point broadband to bring, um, universal broadband to Smith, With and Washington. Points wanna invest thirty-three billion of their own dollars. Uh, so that's, we actually, when we were putting the application together, it was one of those where you shoot for the moon and you'd be happy with what you get, and, um, they gave us the moon. So in the next year and a half or so, it's, it's gonna be a lot of work going on, um, uh, on the right ways, but I just wanna make sure everybody knew that. And then, um, I asked Curtis to, um, to be ready, available to do a COVID update, if he's there in the room still.
How, how, how you doing, Sean? You don't sound too good.
I'm still a little congested, a little lightheaded walking upstairs, but overall, I'm doing good.
So the broadband, will that cover all Smith County?
Yes, sir. It's supposed to cover, um, pretty much wherever a power line is.
Every, every nine-one-one address, I think.
Really?
Yes.
Within the next year?
Yes.
Two years.
Nine, year and a half.
Two and a half to two years.
It'll take a little while for them to stand in this way.
So, uh, having given a COVID report in a bit, uh, with throwing numbers, I just wanted to give a comparison from our twenty-twenty year to our twenty-twenty-one year. First thing is today's numbers, uh, and what we have. The two charts in the back are, are, are comparison from last year to this year. As you can see, in December of last year, uh, is our second highest month that we've had for COVID numbers, uh, throughout the whole pandemic, at seven hundred and seventy-seven. Our highest month that we had was Sep- September of this past year, or of this year, sorry, at eight hundred and sixty-one cases. So, um, as you can see, the trend, we have a uptick around this time, a decline. Uh, if we continue that way, uh, hopefully that's what we're gonna see in the next little bit. At this point in December, we're at two hundred and sixteen. That is, if it's halfway, uh, we're not even half of what December numbers were last year, so that's a good sign going forward. So, uh, be happy to answer any questions about our numbers or what we're, what we're doing COVID-wise. So, uh, be happy to answer any questions about, uh, our numbers or what we're, what we're doing COVID-wise. And just to add one thing, if I may, about the solar, um, the cleanup, we were talking about the bonds at the end, the cleanup is a very important part of that, um, because of what they leave behind. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, ma'am, that's a question to Mr. Uh, talk about this broadband award. I'm assuming there's a press release from somewhere. I almost feel like, I mean, this is a big deal. Was your own press release? I, I noticed the news and messenger isn't here tonight, but.
Yeah, I'm, um, I've been talking with, um, Stephen and, and Jason and, and others in With County, Washington County. It might be good for us to get together tomorrow with Aaron. The grant, I guess, is through the Planning District Commission. They were the official applicants. And yes, uh, for, for sure, this is a big, this is a big news that we need to get out.
Yes.
Alrighty, um, supervisor comment time. I'll start, I'll start here with Mike.
First of all, I'd like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, thank you for all the hard work that you've done for our county, for the citizens of our county. I'd like to thank the law enforcement especially for the job they do. And they do a tremendous job both in our community and our schools. And I'd just like to say, um, enjoy working with you all. Sometimes we'll agree to disagree, but we'll walk out of here with a decent end. So thank you all.
All right. Phil?
Uh, you know, I think anytime anybody steps up to serve on the board or do county services they show the effort, yeah, I'd be giving thanks. I may not be here at our next meeting, so I'm gonna thank you, Judy, tonight. You know, uh, we've had our differences from time to time, but I think you, uh, you impress me sometimes with the, your financial wisdom on accounting and stuff like that, and, you know, uh, I appreciate it. I appreciate you stepping up and serving. That's all I'm gonna say.
Rush, yeah. Uh, I agree with Phil with Judy. Good luck in the future, and it's a pleasure serving with you. I have a nomination for the Library Committee Board. Tracy Prater. She's a citizen of Sawal, retired school teacher, retired school principal, and she has a doctorate degree in education. And she loves the library, and she's real passionate about it. I think she'll make it a good. Motion second. Any further discussion?
Was your girl clicked?
She got her degree and she's heaven-pit.
I'm sorry, Charlie.
Get him in his cage and then leave us. A lot, a lot of the orange in the fire. But God bless each and every one of them. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed likewise? Got her in. Chris?
Well, a couple of things I'd like to say. One, I'm glad to see twenty-twenty-one is kind of getting in the rearview mirror. For me personally, the last quarter this year has kind of kicked my tail professionally as my absence is on the various committees. Work has taken a lot of my time. I too want to commend Judy for her service for the last forty years, and thank you for your, for your guidance and leadership, and, um, you'll be missed, so a sincere thank you for that. I'd like to also thank Charlie for his, um, leadership these last six months here so far. Not that you're going anywhere, of course, but I do want to recognize good leadership here. And the rest of the board, I want to commend all of you on your, on our, our roundtable discussion of topics that sometimes can be a little, um, contentious maybe at times, but all our opinions count and we'll arrive at a good decision. I was talking to a citizen today who asked me, how's the county going? And I said, I feel like we're going pretty well. We, we actually are, are, are able to discuss some hard topics and come to a consensus. So I want to commend the board on, on my ability to give feedback to citizens. And there's probably more I should say, but I'll be quiet now, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to wish, uh, all the board members and their families and the staff and their families a Merry Christmas, and, uh, hope we all remember the true meaning for the season. Uh, we have one more board meeting at the end of this month, so I'm gonna say my thank yous and appreciation for, for Judy for the end. But thank you all and Merry Christmas.
Well, first of all, I was pleasantly surprised with the beautiful arrangement of flowers tonight. And I don't know where they came from because it's not identified, but whomever, if they watched the video, whatever, and if I find out, I'll pass it on. They're beautiful and I do appreciate it. Also, I have really enjoyed these past four years of serving on the board. And I want to express a special thanks to the people of the world at District for entrusting me with that, um, honor to, to be their voice. I'd like to congratulate Courtney Widener on his election and, uh, say I wish you lots of luck and I know you're gonna do a great job. And, um, I do appreciate each member of this board. Um, it's been a good board, and I think that, you know, when we've had differences, it's only helped to lead to growth, I think. And it's created some diversity of opinion that in the end I think serves everybody well. So, um, thank all of you for your friendship and your support and for all the work that you do for the, and I've enjoyed working with the staff and with Sean, and I appreciate all of the help and assistance that everybody's provided. I too would like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and, um, that we will move forward and with lots of success in the future. And I feel like that's a real thing that, that Smith County will, um, will be able to do with all the leadership that's provided. So thank all of you.
Thank you. Our next meeting, I think, is for December thirtieth. You gonna be here for that, I hope? Lord willing, decree, don't rush.
Yes.
All right. Yeah, what time would that meeting be? Five o'clock?
Seven, it's seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock, it's on December thirtieth. Alrighty, um, I, I myself would like to say thank you for the board. We do have some good discussion, discussion now. We're not afraid to say, speak our mind, know we can still walk out of here and not be.
Why's everybody looking at me, man?
But, uh, you know, this.
Hey, we can talk to Phil, but we still don't worry about it. Come off the door.
But we do have, we do have a board now that engages and talks to issues, and I'm happy to hear and see that. And it's good out in the, in the public that the public perceives that we're, we're doing, trying to do the right thing. And I would like to relate, I've had several employees come to me and say, thank you for the Christmas bonus. I want to make sure all of y'all aware that the citizens, I mean, the employees are very pleased with that.
I thought it was Phil's idea.
What happened? What happened? Did it work out for the deputies? Did Chip have enough money?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Yes.
Yes, so I mean, the employees were just tickled. Once again, we found out how many listened or read the minutes to our board meeting because a lot of them were surprised with the, uh, with the bonus again. If they'd just watched this, they'd have known because we had to vote on it. But that does a little bit to bring their salary a little closer to reality where it should be. But, uh, we're blessed with a good set of employees, and I want to say thank you to them, you know, was able to do that. I want everyone to have a nice Christmas, and we'll see you back here on the thirtieth. Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. With that, we're adjourned.